I'd like to call the March 29th meeting of the Board of Education to order and briefly explain, this is our second meeting we've had in March, and that's because our normal meeting would be next week during spring break, Easter vacation. So we decided to have it in March rather than put two meetings close together, second one or another one in April and then an early one in May. And with that, I'd ask Ms. Etheridge to give us an invocation, please.
Yes, good evening. Although the world is full of suffering, it is full also of overcoming it, coming of it. Helen Keller, Annie Sullivan. Helen Keller was considered a sort of wild child before Annie Sullivan came to teach and work with her. Her world now dark and silent, Helen thrashed around the house much to her parents dismay. After a slow and frustrating start, Helen recognized her first word in sign language, which was water. It was triumphant for both the teacher and the student. Soon after, Helen was quick to learn other words. Annie was proud of her student. She could not believe how quickly Helen learned. She called her progress a miracle. Helen's accomplishments were amazing, achieving what seemed to be impossible. Now that Helen could express her thoughts, the crying fit stopped. She was happy and contented. Whenever Annie taught her a new word, Helen would throw her arms around her teacher and kiss her. Teachers of delayed or disabled students can testify to similar miracles. Parents usually bestow undying gratitude to the teacher who unlocks their child's world and gives them hope. Each child's potential can be unlocked. Each teacher has the key. Are you willing to take the time to find out which key fits? Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call Principal Deb Gorza, the principal at Notts Island Elementary, up to introduce the person who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Nicholas Cox is going to come help us with the pledge.
Would you all please rise?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, God of all.
Okay, and the school spotlight is also on Notts Island Elementary, so I'll ask Ms. Gorza to come back up.
Dr. Donley, Board of Education, Mr. Sponik, thank you for having us. Tonight, we're going to spotlight our new STEM lab and some of the activities that they have been doing in it. Ms. Haskell has made a short video, so you get a visual of it.
Teachers at Notts Island Elementary believe in hands-on learning. We have included project-based learning as an instructional method for many years. For the past three years, our focus on STEM learning has evolved into events such as our STEM Challenge Days and STEM-themed events in the library. We have grown as educators so that our students will receive more inquiry and problem-solving learning in their subjects.
What are you doing?
Oh!
This is how science works.
An excellent addition to our school is the STEM lab. The Friends of Mackey Island, a local nonprofit that supports stewardship of our natural resources and the ecosystem of Notts Island, provided the funds through a donation to our school. The STEM lab has brought a lot of excitement to our students and teachers. It contains some excellent materials for our teachers and students to embrace the STEM and maker culture. The room is designed to be collaborative and flexible. Movable tables allow teachers to create spaces needed for floor projects or combine seating for small group. There's a smart board for a whole group instruction or video demonstrations. Teachers have used materials like the giant pegboard to teach about geometric shapes, symmetry, and just fun designs. Second grade students got to experience what it was like to be a Lego designer. During their computer lab time with Ms. Haskell, they created Lego designs with the virtual 3D Lego builder on Chrome. Students then created their designs with real Legos, following their printed design from the computer. Fourth and fifth grade students have explored problem-solving puzzles with the breakout EDU boxes. Students are also using the green screen video area to create newscast video projects and book trailers.
Bringing you the Iron Rules by Cynthia Lord for Book, Page 22nd, 2018. In Book News Today, we will see how David reacts to...
There is so much fun and learning ahead. We are just getting started.
All righty, we've brought some of our fourth grade students with us. They did a project with coding and created like little operation games, and they're going to tell you about what they learned when they were doing that.
We had a STEM project in AIG. STEM means Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics. The project we did was to combine something that relates to one of those meanings of STEM, a topic of our interest. I chose the combustion engine. The combustion engine is a simple engine used in some vehicles such as cars and airplanes. Spark ignition gasoline compression ignition diesel engines differ in how they supply and ignite the fuel. In a spark ignition engine, the fuel is mixed with air and then inducted into cylinder, inducted into the cylinder during the intake process. After the piston compresses the fuel-air mixture, the spark ignites and causes combustion.
I'm Shepherd Dermott. We create an operation-type game based on each of our research topics. The goal of the game is to remove objects, the objects, without making contact with the sides or the bottom. If you do, you'll hear a sound and lose a life. Have you ever wondered what's inside a computer? Well, there's a lot of parts. The first, the motherboard. The motherboard communicates with other parts of the system. The USB is a standard cable connection that can also carry this information about the drivers and allows charging of devices. The CPU is the brains of the system. The router connects to the network. The modem is a device that provides access to the internet.
I'm Wade Futrell. To connect to our operation game to the computer, we use the makey-makey board. It is a two-sided circuit board that becomes a mouse and a keyboard. By connecting the alligator clips to the board, you can control the inputs of your keyboard to follow the code we write for the game. My topic was the V-22 Osprey, a high-class marine plane. But it's not just a plane, it's also a helicopter. My favorite thing about it is something called a IR suppressor. When you fly a plane, if you were on a mission in the military, wouldn't you want your plane to be silent and unheard? I would. The IR suppressor is mostly kind of what makes it military clean, because why would you waste an IR suppressor on a normal commercial aircraft? It is a VTOF, which means vertical takeoff and landing. When you take off, the thruster slowly turns forward to where the correct landing phase is for. This plane is around $73 million.
Wow.
I am Michael Gushwal. We use Scratch, that program to create the code for our game. This is a block-based program created by MIT. It was the first time we used Scratch, but we haven't coded it, coded it before since second grade. Have you ever wondered if you could have a dinosaur as a pet? I made my game based on the Hairsaurus, but the Hairsaurus should be a pet candidate. About the size, it was about the size of a Shiba Tainen. It was discovered by a goopher in 1959. It weighs as much as an Nile crocodile, but is believed to have lived 231 million years ago, making it the earliest dinosaur to live. This dinosaur also has many feathers. It could have run as fast as an African elephant.
They just wanted to show you a little bit about the game, and they did all the connections and the coding. So if you want to turn your, turn, turn, show them the coding then, we know you want to play.
Well, I would like them to bring their projects up and show us.
The, the blocks, okay. Because if they're connected...
They're connected to the computers.
You want to walk down there and hit them?
They can care. They understand.
We can walk down there and look at them.
They're pretty sturdy, little bit, aren't they? Thank you all for coming and seeing that work. You got pieces in there?
Yeah.
So they had the... Did they start off with chopsticks? Yeah. Basically, they were studying.
Yeah.
Don't die.
I'm probably not good at this.
Without touching.
I love Scratch.
That's hard.
I like that sound. I like this.
I never asked for the chopsticks either.
How did you make different sounds?
That's cool.
How do you like using the Chrome app?
Hold on, that's good. Good job.
Keep up the good work.
Good job.
Absolutely.
I saw yours up there. That's a good picture.
Good work, guys.
I didn't know there was a second useful chopstick. That's pretty good.
Mark was on his knees, yeah.
Sometimes I gotta run the honor.
Ms. Gorza, before the students sit down, could you just have them say their name real
loud and clear one more time for the people watching on TV?
My name is Nicholas Cox.
My name is Shepherd Dermott.
My name is Michael Gushwal.
My name is Wade Futrell.
Great. You all did a very good job. Thank you.
Miss Haskell, is this your first year of doing STEM?
Not exactly, no.
No?
No. This is, well, it was my first year with this project, but we've been using makey-makey for a couple of years and coding and those kinds of things. But STEM lab has really brought in a lot of new activities and energy with the students and the teachers, so that's
the media specialist, is that correct?
That's correct. Media specialist, a split position with added technology generally, been...
And I... STEM lab is really nice. Ms. Gorza took me and showed me that a few...
so that they, you know, research and technology skills all and interplay with their curriculum Yes, one time you guys come around and visit and just show us some of the things that are else that we can do in that. or project-based learning with teachers, find resources for teachers, help develop
And I think you have something tied into behavioral issues with getting extra STEM
those kinds of resources between my classroom, the library, and their classroom, AIG kids,
time, is that correct?
Yeah, we did, we did, we called it bingo sheet this, this March, just kind of March and of course, my app.
Yep. This year, you stepped up to the plate and helped us with that. Good job. Thank
Madness, trying to keep it down. So the students are given each grade level a different bingo
you.
sheet, and the teachers put the blocks, and it could be anything from more AR points
If the students need to leave, they can go.
to behavior, to, you know, be nice to a friend, and if they get bingo, they get extra STEM Thank you.
Yeah, they got to drive.
time.
Yeah, no, you have a long drive back.
Yep.
Okay, next item, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, public comment session. The public comment session is a time when an individual or group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called up in order in which they signed up, and will be asked to limit the remarks to three minutes. And also, please state your name and address. And we have three people signed up tonight. First one, Emily Saiva? Don't know if I said that right, but...was I close?
It's Saiva.
Saiva?
I'm close.
Okay.
Did you say I need to state my address too? Okay. My name is Emily Saiva, and I'm a junior at Currituck County High School. I live at 100 Ventress Drive, Notts Island, North Carolina. When I saw that the walkout was on this week's agenda, I felt compelled to come speak on behalf of a lot of students that aren't as heard. The walkout disrupted my education. Multiple children stood up, made a ruckus, and made rude jokes, and then ultimately disrespected the teacher by walking out in the middle of their lesson. A lot of them did not return within 17 minutes. Some students in my class returned over 30 minutes later. The protest, moment of silence, whichever we are now labeling it, could have been held before school, like the prayer circle we organized about a month ago. It could have been held after school or even at lunch. It did not need to be directly in the middle of class time, and if it was indeed just a moment of silence, why didn't students ask the office if they would be willing to announce a moment of silence over the intercom like they do in the mornings? The goal was to be disruptive to the learning environment, and that goal was achieved. If a student or multiple students had left class at any other time on any other day, they would almost definitely be suspended whether in school or out of school following a trip to the office. Other schools have punished this behavior, and ours has not. By not punishing this behavior, you set the precedent that any student who peacefully protests something they feel strongly about cannot be punished. Therefore, as an example, if I were to ask to use the restroom during class tomorrow, and my teacher did not allow it, I could quietly walk out peacefully and protest of my right to use the restroom, free from any sort of punishment, even though I'm leaving in the middle of a class. I also feel the need to point out that some of our high school school board representatives also walked out. The majority of the student body did not, and these students are supposed to be the voice for all of us, but if punishment is being discussed, then they are here to protect themselves, not to represent our voice. On a final note, I'm tired of teachers' political views being forced down our throats while we're at school to learn. My class time has been disrupted by protests. My teachers go on rants about their own personal political views and opinions. One of my teachers just hung up giant signs in their classroom that we, on the whiteboard that we used to learn on, with their own personal opinions on the arming teachers with guns debate, with signs that boldly say hashtag, "Arm me with..." dot, 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 and then wrote in their own opinions about arming teachers under it. And please believe me, this is not about censoring people's views that may not coincide with my own. It's about making school a neutral zone. Kids are very easily impressionable and do not need teachers attempting to sway them one way or the other. We're in school to learn the state mandated subjects that are in our curriculum, not what Mr. or Mrs. thinks about politics. I want to go to school in a conflict-free and disruption-free environment where I'm free to form my own opinions without other people trying to sway me. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, next, Michelle Saiva.
Good evening. Well, it's kind of hard to top my daughter, but I'm going to give it to you from a parent's perspective about the walkout protests that happened on March the 14th. As a parent, any of us, no matter if they're at the elementary, middle schools, high schools, we entrust the school to take care of our children. We entrust the school to keep our children safe. We expect to be notified if something of this scale is going to take place during school time on educational time. Every time anything happens at Currituck County High School, I get a notification on my phone. I get an email about events taking place at school. The morning of the walkout protest, I called the high school to find out how they were going to proceed with this planned thing that was not planned by the students of the high school. It was a nationwide thing that the schools could either participate in or not participate in. All I wanted to know is how it was going to take place. It was a very simple question. Is it allowed? Are the children allowed to just get up and walk out? Where is it going to be held? Simple questions that should have been answered with a simple answer. I was told that I, they were not at liberty to tell me what was taking place at the school during my daughter's school day. I was told that they could not tell me anything. I asked, was any announcements made over the intercom, what you, what time you're supposed to walk out, where you're supposed to go, any kind of instruction. My own student wasn't even instructed. I feel the school failed. The students, the school failed, the parents. You can't have something like this of this scale happening on school grounds and not notify the parents. I should be able to give permission on whether or not my minor child can walk out of her class, which, by the way, she did not. Okay, I, I would ask that you think of it long-term, because the next one coming up on the planned nationwide walkout is April the 20th. I don't want any more of these walkouts during school hours. If these kids feel so strongly that they need to protest something or change something, they did a great job planning the prayer circle on their own. They did it before school, they did it for their fellow students, and they did a great job. There were no issues. We were lucky that there was no violence that broke out on March 14th, because other schools across the country were not so lucky. I would like to have known if my child was going to be in any kind of danger. I would like to have known anything about that day. And I can't take that back. I can't do anything back. I did place phone calls to everybody, and I got one returned phone call.
You did not call me.
Nor me.
I have a call log of every number I was given by the school.
I was not contacted.
I wasn't.
For the record, I return every phone call I receive, and I was not contacted.
Okay, well, I, I didn't just pick one to call.
Well, if three of us say that we didn't...
Where did you get the phone numbers? And I checked my email, because I did see something on Facebook that I think you had posted, that you got no returned phone calls, and I went and checked my voicemail.
Yes, and the person that called me back also had to search back through their voicemails, because it was the day after the protest. They had to search back through their, or their voicemails to find my voicemail.
I check all voicemails on a realtor.
Okay, I'm not here to debate.
I'm here tonight because I feel like you're all in one place, and I can speak to you directly face-to-face. That way, it's not any secret, you know? I did make posts on Facebook. I want to know what my fellow community feels like, and I can tell you, after almost 3,000 comments, the majority of the parents are not happy about what happened. They're not happy how it took place. It's not a fact of whether the kids wanted to do something or not. It was the fact that the parents were completely put in the dark. And I'm sorry, but that, it, we didn't encourage it, but we didn't discourage it. That is not an answer. That is a big skirt around it, because if you encouraged it, you would have announced it. You would have told everybody, hey, we welcome you to go out there. We're going to have security there for you. We're going to let your parents know this is happening at school. That didn't happen.
Okay, your three minutes have turned into about five, so thank you, thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, Caroline Walker.
My address is 291 Water Lily Road, Quinjock, North Carolina. Good evening. I'm Caroline Walker, a junior at Currituck County High School. I was one of the organizers of the student walkout, student-led walkout on March 14th. I come before you tonight to thank the board, the administrators of CCHS, and the Currituck County Sheriff's Department. As you may know, on March 14th, 180 CCHS students quietly and peacefully exited the school and met at the football stadium. Once we all gathered, we held hands, bowed our heads, and had a moment of silence in honor of the 17 lives that were taken a month before in Parkland, Florida. We then had students speak, pray, and some brought personal concerns for a safer school environment. Many people in our community have been supportive of the students and this cause, but many have not. They have taken to social media to attack not only the cause, but the students themselves. Right now, students are hearing from every angle that they are not mature enough, and that they don't have the intelligence, and that they don't deserve to have a say. We are being belittled and put down by some of the adults that are telling us to walk up and not walk out. Ironic. You see, part of living in a free society is we are all allowed to have our opinions and to express that opinion. It seems to me that we may need to all learn to listen to each other and discuss these opinions in a respectful manner, then come to a middle ground between the two opinions. I appreciate the opportunity tonight, as well as on March 14th, to express my opinion using my First Amendment right. I thank the students, teachers, administrators, and deputies who did not block this peaceful walkout.
Thank you, Caroline. And that closes the public comment session. Next item, review and discussion on student protests. Mr. Grotick?
Well, I'll be, I'll be quite honest with you.
Is your microphone on, Will?
Hello? Yep. Sorry about that. So I'll be quite honest with you. I don't have a problem with people have a difference of opinion, okay? What I have a problem with is rule and order. And when people are required by the federal government and the state government to attend school, and are adolescents, they're in the care or the guidance of the school system when they're not in the care or guidance at home. I personally have a problem with disrupting education time. I do not have a problem with people using their First Amendment rights out in public. However, their First Amendment rights in... We are being belittled and put down by some of the adults that are telling us to walk up and not walk out. Ironic. You see, part of living in a free society is we are all allowed to have our opinions and to express that opinion. It seems to me that we may need to all learn to listen to each other and discuss these opinions in a respectful manner, then come to a middle ground between the two opinions. I appreciate the opportunity tonight, as well as on March fourteenth, to express my opinion using my First Amendment right. I thank the students, teachers, administrators, and deputies who did not block this peaceful walkout.
Thank you, Caroline. And that closes the public comment session. Next item, review and discussion on student protests. Mr. Krotick.
Well, I'll be, I'll be quite honest with you.
Is your microphone on, Will?
Hello? Yep. Sorry about that. So, I'll be quite honest with you. I don't have a problem with people have a difference of opinion. Okay? What I have a problem with is rule and order. And when people are required by the federal government and the state government to attend school, and they're adolescents, they're in the care or the guidance of the school system when they're not in the care or guidance at home. I personally have a problem with disrupting education time. I do not have a problem with people using their First Amendment rights out in public. However, their First Amendment rights in, when they're in school, as indicated right here in our Student Conduct Disruptive Behavior Policy 4315, which we currently have in place, it talks about a student's right to free speech, not being infringed. Upon however, you know, there are different, less First Amendment rights when you're on school property. And there are also less First Amendment rights that students carry when they're attending school functions. So what I'm after isn't political opinions being shared during the educational day. If that's part of the curriculum and that's a debate, that's one thing. But to have kids, adolescents, students, if they're going to be deciding what the rules are or breaking the rules, we have rules in order to maintain order. So without consequence, you've got chaos. So I'm here to tell you that what happens next week or next month, when some other people have a different view on the same exact issue, and they want to have a remembrance for the seventeen lost lives, and they want to protest the Second Amendment right, because they felt like somebody could have saved some lives if they had some guns. Now, I'm not saying I'm in support of either. My point is this, we have to have rule and order. We cannot have, if, if we're going to have students making it up as they go along and we don't have consequence, then we don't need teachers, we don't need administrators, we don't need the board, we don't need rules, because that's why you have rules, is to maintain order. The Supreme Court ruled numerous times that students do not have the same First Amendment rights when they're in this school and on school property, or when they're attending school functions. I just don't think we need to have kids on school property. Anybody else that wants to use school property, even for a soccer team, we had to approve letting them use our fields. We didn't encourage it, I'm told, but we didn't stop it. So we, we brought in security. I didn't, but the system did, the school system. We knew what was happening. We did nothing to encourage it or discourage it, so we'll basically, we, in my opinion, we enabled it with no consequence. So we have to have policy, and I'm here to find out what it's going to be. I can't say everybody's going to have my opinion, but I don't think, I would have been very happy, I wasn't happy that they were doing it in middle school. I wasn't particularly happy they were doing it in high schools. But I also had a phone call saying, or, or, or a message saying, well, we didn't have any at the elementary schools. That'd have been a shame. It was a shame already, but I mean, really? K through six? What did they even know about these issues? K through five? What I'm saying is, at the end of the day, uh, people are entitled to their own opinion, but they're not entitled to make it up as they go along and be disruptive to the educational process. We're here to get education. We're not here to hold protests and rallies and people want to use the school grounds and they should go through the same process that anybody else had before, and we should apply the same rules to everybody, whether you believe in what happened or not.
Okay, I have two points I'd like to make. First, there was a landmark Supreme Court case, Tinker versus Des Moines, that stated that students do not lose their First Amendment rights when they cross through the threshold to go into a school. And the second thing I would like to ask you, Mr. Krotick, what if these students and teachers that were killed would have been from Currituck? Would you still want these kids punished if they walked out?
What I want is rule and order. I want a policy. I want to know what we're going to do when it happens next time. It's already happened now. Do I think that people should be allowed to just walk out? And do I think that I should have been told, or any parent, or anybody from the public to not attend? Me, as a board member, I wasn't allowed to attend, teachers weren't allowed to attend, parents weren't allowed to attend. It's the only school activity I've ever heard of that none of those people were allowed to attend. Okay? It's ridiculous.
Did you answer my question, please?
Yeah, I'll answer your question. I think if you break rules, you need to face consequence, period.
Okay, if that would have happened here in Currituck and you wanted those kids punished, I would say that's not only unconscionable, that's heartless.
Well, I can tell you right now, we can expect to have a rally every week. We can have a rally, like she mentioned, not a rally, a protest for her not being able to use the bathroom. We can have a protest for people not being able to eat in class. We can have a protest for everything. We have to have rule and order. I'm not saying that I, I don't sympathize with the lives lost, that's not what I'm saying. And I'm not saying that, I'm not, um, saying that they couldn't have used the campus before after school on the weekends. I'm saying, we're disrupting the educational process. We're here to educate, and we're supposed to have policy and rule and order. Where is the rule and order? That's what I'm asking you. Where is it? Because here's a policy and we didn't adhere to it.
Good job.
Ms. Krot, is Ms. Krotch here? Could you tell us what occurred that day, what you saw?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we actually had a lot going on that day. Before we actually got started, we had to transport two students to the hospital minutes before, but, um, so what happened, I think it was supposed to start about 10 o'clock, and at 10 o'clock, students started to come out the classroom, and they walked toward the, um, the stadium, and most of the administrators and any teachers that were in one planning period were out. We also had teachers around the building to make sure that students weren't just anywhere. And so the students came out and they kind of formed a group, and then Caroline, you know, kind of gave everybody direction to get in the circle. Um, I saw posters of the, of the seventeen victims, and she just started out by saying why they were here. We were here to, you know, to pay tribute to the seventeen people who lost their lives. And so I think, I believe they started with a moment of silence, and then she just encouraged students to, to talk, and then she prayed, and then other students prayed and talked for about, it might have been just a, it was about seventeen minutes, but it was a little bit over, and then I actually had to leave to go with one of the students to the hospital, so I don't know what happened at the very end. But when I was out there, and I would say, I was there probably at least about fifteen minutes or between thirteen and fifteen minutes. Um, again, I had staff members all around making sure that the kids were safe as possible, that nobody was approaching.
And what about the students that chose not to go out and they stayed in their classroom?
I did not get any reports of any student being disruptive, whether they chose to come out or whether they stayed in the classroom.
So you say some of the students prayed when they went out?
Yes.
If they're supposed to be punished for, uh, that, I can't agree that we should punish kids for praying.
I'm not saying we need to punish kids for praying. You, you, you know what? I'm saying that she just sat there and told us that we had teachers and administrators around the building, which I'm happy to say that while this was going on, you protected her safety. However, but you knew what was happening prior to, to that day, correct?
I knew that it was a possibility of it happening, yes.
Okay, and, and, and so there was extra sheriff deputies present as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. Did you know that they sent around an email asking no parents and no board members and no teachers to take place in this, or to come and witness it?
Again, my job, of course, to also educate kids, but also keep them safe. And so, of course, the concern with this is if kids are walking out and they're walking out of the building, then they're out in the open. Um, and because this was a national event, again, it was happening all over, and so what we didn't want, meaning I, everybody that, my administrative staff, we didn't want our kids to be vulnerable to something happening at that time. So we were trying to make sure that we had all bases covered.
And the no visitors directive came from me. To just make it, it was a.
Do you want to explain the rationale behind?
Yeah, well, there was, there was, there was a student-led, it was a student-led activity. Um, I think I, I heard Mr. Krotick say that it was the only school event. Uh, it was not a school event. Uh, we did not plan it, uh, we did not organize it, uh, and so our job was to make sure that the students, whether they participated or not, were safe on our campus. And so having others come on the campus that aren't a member of the high school family on a daily basis, we didn't know what, um, ideas, beliefs, or actions any of those visitors would bring to the, uh, to the school. And so this was strictly for the, um, high school students or the middle school students, depending on the campus, uh, and, and that was it. Um, we, uh, as you read in the paper, I turned away the media, um, because they're considered to be a visitor. Um, they're, they're not there on a daily basis, and we didn't want anything to, uh, impact, uh, the situation on a negative basis.
Only thing I might add is I, I went to the website that structured the national event, okay? And I clicked on Currituck County and JPNA, and it didn't say, when you did click on that school, it didn't say a time of remembrance. What actually it said was gun reform. Now, whether I agree with that or not, it's got a, that's a moot point. My point is, it wasn't just to remember, it was with another message, together, okay? That's what the national event was. So, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, that's what it said, because I went to the website.
Sure, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but the students that were outside did not mention anything else other than the seventeen victims, and, uh, some kids talked about, you know, how to treat each other better and that it didn't make sense that, you know, some kids felt left out and that type of thing. So there was no talk, to my knowledge, about what you're saying.
I'm sure all of our students are feeling concerned with this going on all over the country. They're concerned about their safety, and they're sad that this is happening, I understand that, and I, I do respect their right to voice their concerns. My concern with the whole thing was, I did feel like we should have notified parents. And I did contact the superintendent, and my thoughts were, let the parents discuss it with their children the night before, what are you going to do? This is what it's about. But I was told that was, it was not a school-sponsored event, and so that's why we didn't do the alert now. So to the parent that had concerns about that, I certainly see where you're coming from on that. But I am proud of our students, those that walked out and those that stayed in, because I'm out at that high school a lot. My daughter's a student there, I know a lot of children that go there. I didn't hear anything negative as far as that anybody was being ugly to anybody. I, I didn't hear that. I asked my daughter, were you ridiculed because you stayed in class? You know, I, and I'm proud of them for not being ugly to one another, because they were on different sides of the aisle, so to speak, but.
Any of the student board members have anything you'd like to add?
Different sides of the aisle, I thought they were just out there praying. How can you be on different sides of the aisle while praying?
Well, as far as leaving the class.
I would like to have order, please.
Yes, sir.
Because I just asked the student board members.
I'll gladly add, although I am not always at the high school campus, I know the Currituck or the College of the Albemarle did hold events for it, and what a lot of classes tried to do is they tried to schedule their classes so that it wouldn't fall in the lockout or the walkout portion, so that students wouldn't feel like they had to walk out of class or they had to miss anything. They wanted to make them feel as comfortable as possible, and I really feel that the same types of precautions and respects are paid out to students in counties across from where we govern.
So they stopped class, basically?
Class ended around it, yes.
From that time. For everybody.
Yeah, so.
Disrupted the educational day.
At CWA.
So, most of our classes have like specific time blocks. Ours, uh, we had calculus at the time, and, um, ours goes from nine to about 9:50. Normally, they carry it over to get an extra like lesson or two in. Um, and, uh, we usually have our break time in between, because then we have our lab time from 10:00 to 10:50. Uh, our teachers specifically made sure that our class ended at 10:00, so that the students felt comfortable with walking out and being able to go out without missing anything, um, especially with the material, and making sure they felt comfortable with what was going on. Also, they had, um, a lot of the resource officers that are there, that are on campus, were around them, standing around them and making sure that they were safe as well.
As far as the College of the Albemarle was concerned, you felt very secure. There were people watching, there were people keeping watch, making sure they were, they were posted at doors, they were posted in hallways. You felt safe.
So how much class time did you miss? I mean, there were some, obviously, if you wanted to go and participate, you would, but for those that didn't, how much class time did they miss?
Um, I specifically did not walk out of class.
I hadn't either, and really, the amount of class time missed was, it was negligible.
Um, I know one of our fellow students walked out, and I think they missed like maybe a couple words before they walked back in. Uh, it was very consistent, and they timed it very well.
Yeah, uh, and the, our schedules are very tight, I'm sure, as you know, a lot of these classes, especially when they're condensed, since the material is very difficult. Seventeen minutes in a lot of cases does mean a lot, but in this case, we've sort of planned around that, so it wasn't as big of a deal, didn't have as much of an impact to our courses. So in many cases, I would agree with you, Mr. Krotick, seventeen minutes is a significant amount of time and can affect course schedules, but not if it's planned for.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that, uh, but that's only a part of my issue. My issue is how to maintain, uh, order, and so I was trying to find out what we're going to have a policy or not going forward, and I appreciate your, your honesty and, and what you brought forward. Uh, however, if they were out there for seventeen minutes, that means they had to walk out there and then had to walk back, so it had to be slightly more than seventeen minutes if they were out there for seventeen minutes. But I just want to know, are we going to have a policy? Are we just going to let students make the rules? And I equate that to chaos. And I'm not being disrespectful, I'm saying, are the adults and the guidance of the school system going to institute policy? Are we going to allow the students to do it? And that's what I'm here to find out.
May I say something really quickly? Um, although I do not participate, do not participate in the walkout, I'm very proud of our students, and I hundred percent support their expression of their right, and I think it is wrong to punish students to express their First Amendment rights. And, um, the last thing I want to say is that if a punishment is put in place, I will volunteer to be personally punished, although I did not participate in the walkout.
Thank you.
Dr. Diamond, to, to that point, and, uh, another thing to, uh, Mr. Krotick's point about, um, order, um, the, the reason we did the research, um, when we heard that this was a possibility, was to make sure that there was order and safety on the campus, uh, and on all four of our campuses. Um, I went, and I had a chance to witness two of them, uh, because I, I was nervous making sure that we had everything in place, and so I was doing figure eights between, uh, Currituck Middle and Currituck High School, uh, in the vehicle, making sure that front of the building, sides of the building, back of the building, everything was as secure as it possibly could be. And reports from, uh, the administrators were that, uh, it was organized. Um, uh, the students did return to class and the day was able to get back, uh, in session, and I, um, you know, compliment the, the, the staff members and the administrators for the plans that they put forth. But when we go and, and get national, um, guidance, um, on how to address, um, situations like this, and we, we take it through attorneys, uh, both, uh, nationwide attorneys and our in-state attorney and our own board attorney, um, that's what guided our decision. Um, and when I heard that we may have been on the outlier on the other side, like people were, um, you know, putting out punishments or trying to stop the, the walkouts, I sent out a survey to our, our northeast region, and we have sixteen school districts in the northeast region. Um, fourteen chose to respond to the, uh, survey, two didn't have any students that walked out, the other twelve handled the situation exactly the same way we did. So it was basically for the people that did have walkout students, it was unanimous, create a safe environment for the students to express their First Amendment rights, get the school day back in session after the expression was over, uh, and make sure everybody remains safe. Uh, and so, uh, that, that's the, the information we went off of. The, um, school districts that we heard from in the Hampton Roads area, um, they also either actually made it more of a school-sponsored, uh, activity in one, in one district. In one, in one district, and the other district, they did do an attendance mark for an unexcused absence, but the very next sentence after unexcused absence was, students will be able to make up any work that is missed. And so, for me, that's the definition of unexcused absence, is that you don't get a chance to make up the work that you missed, so they just revised their definition of unexcused absence, and it ended up being just an attendance mark, so not necessarily a consequence.
I think the thing that we need to realize is that these are young adults, they're not, they're not, they are kids, but they still have minds that they're using, and they're the ones that are being shot at, people, they're the ones that people are going into the schools and shooting. So, I, I think they need a voice.
Was there any report of any chaos that went on?
Not from what I heard, and I also read in the paper that a superintendent from another district actually said, similar to what Ms. Rose said, that he complimented and he was proud of the way the students handled this activity, and were able to get back to the educational process after it was over with. To Ms. Aker's comment about if discipline is enforced, then she would actually take the discipline too, it is actually a violation of law to do a sweeping discipline. All discipline cases have to be done on an individual basis, and currently, there are only two activities that can actually get to like a suspension level, and walking out and participating in an activity like this is not one of the two. That's on the book for a mandatory suspension from school.
And I want to commend the students that got together and prayed for their fellow classmates as well, and they did that before school, and I think that's, that was wonderful. And I understand the idea that possibly this should have happened at a different time, but I also understand the students that organized this, the, the unity that they wanted to have with students across the country, and as Ms. Kraft just said, these are our children that are being affected by these school shootings. And it's, it's very sad that they have to even think about it.
Mr. Stefanik, could I ask you a question? You mentioned that you spoke to a board attorney. Did you ever mention, like, what was it that you guys could do, since it was a nationally-sponsored event, it didn't fall within school jurisdiction? Am I, am I hearing that correctly? So, what could you guys, what could you guys have done? Because I know you guys exercised all...
Like a school-wide assembly.
What could we have sponsored?
Right, right.
Actually, not much, without taking a side. The, the guidance that we received from national organizations and our school attorney, basically just maintaining a safe environment kept us neutral. And that's, that's what the school system is supposed to do, to respect all viewpoints for all the students that we serve.
And Ms. Rose, I know you also said that whenever you tried to contact people, see if you could guys maybe contact parents about this, you said that you weren't able to.
I, well, I asked their superintendent. I really felt like we should have done an all-call, and said, we've had a rumor that this might occur, and, you know, we're just letting you know, and you may want to talk to your students, or, you know. But, it was strictly, we did not, we were not leading this, we did not know for sure that it was going, and Superintendent Stefanik said we could not do that, because then it was becoming a school-sponsored event.
Right.
I just got one last question. You said that the attorney said that we couldn't do much, or else we'd be taking a side? A side of what?
Well, a side of the issue.
Which issue?
Well, the, actually, because, as you stated on the website, there was something about gun control, but what was presented to our administrators by our student groups had nothing to do with that. It had to do with the giving respect and paying respects to the folks that lost their lives and their families, and classmates. That, that's what was presented at both high schools as preparatory statements on why they might be able to organize something, and why they might be able to, you know, have students participate.
And that was the reason for the time, too, of the morning?
Yes, seventeen minutes for seventeen victims, yes.
Yeah.
I have one final question. Dr. Donovan, I know you've been on this board the longest, have you ever experienced this maybe while you were as a regular board member or a superintendent?
Sir, I was a superintendent when Columbine happened. So I know the precautions you have to take to try to convince parents that their kids are gonna be safe when you, you know, bring them to school. As far as walkouts, didn't encounter any of that, because Columbine was more around student safety within the school. And we did, you know, we took buses by random and had those metal detector wands and wandered the kids down and that. And about all, after we did that for three or four months, the most we ever found was probably fifteen, sixteen lighters and a couple pocket knives, and that's all we found from that. And, but, we still, you know, had sheriff's deputies patrolling the area, stopping in to try to make sure that our kids were going to be safe, so, to answer your question, yes.
Tyler, I did encounter two walkouts when I was a student. One when I was a ninth grader at JP NAP, and one when I was a tenth grader at CCHS, which is now the middle school, Kurutuck Middle. One was over a principal who was let go, and the other one was, it was racially divided. Both instances, from what I can remember, some students went out, some, and some stayed in. I don't remember anyone getting in trouble, I remember administrators going out and talking and saying, now we need to go back to class, and they went back to class, but that was very different than this. You know, that was, they were both situations where people walked out and said, we're not going back, you know?
Thank you. The only reason I ask is, the best way I thought we could handle is if we could see if there's a previous precedent, so we can maybe apply, and to address Mr. Kradic's issue, maybe see if there is some type of policy, even though there, like Mr. Stefanik said, there isn't much we can do with this being a national event. And my thinking is, if something like this were to happen in the future, it would also be a national event, where we would follow procedure as, for their guidelines, so...
So that's my concern. We're setting precedent right now. We're not doing anything, and not making any policy going forward. So we have just set precedent, all right?
Okay, I'm gonna make one last comment, then we're gonna move on. I find it ironic that students who miss seventeen minutes of class would be punished by suspending them where they would miss the whole day worth of class. That makes no sense to me, so... All right, next item, student board member reports. Jenna, Colin, Tyler?
Thank you, board. I would just like to remind everyone that junior student board member applications are in your guidance office, so please take the time to apply. And we're gonna start out with Moyac Middle School tonight. Math one students competed at a district competition held on Tuesday, March 27th, at Elizabeth City State University. Twelve students competed, bringing Moyac Middle School to a third-place school victory. One student, Andrew Zarnaski, won first place in math one and qualified to compete at the state level next month. On April 26th, 2018, Moyac Middle School FFA will be chartered by the NCFFA, making it an official chapter in North Carolina FFA and National FFA. FFA is a student organization which promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. Chartering is a formalization of the beginning of a new FFA chapter. Moyac Middle School is one of twenty-eight new FFA chapters this academic year. The chartering ceremony is just that, a ceremony which embraces the traditions of the past while sharing the potentials for members for the future. We will be joined by Dr. Jason Davis from NCFFA, as well as state FFA officers, who will conduct the chartering of the chapter. Moyac Middle School has fifteen student members who will receive their discovery degree for their year of membership. Our FFA chapter is very thankful for our new sponsors, Kurutuck Farm Bureau and Duncan and Sun Farm. Their generous donations are helping our chapter and our students. FBLA members attended the state convention March 18th through the 21st. It was a huge success. Our FBLA earned the Gold Seal Chapter Award of Merit, and were recognized as the largest chapter in both the eastern region and the state. Twenty-three students were also recognized at the conference for placing top ten in nineteen competitions. While the weather has not been cooperative, spring sports are still underway. Our first softball and baseball game was played in the snow at Pro Quimmins. Track has started, and fifty athletes are participating. The eighth-grade teams at MMS are currently collaborating on a project-based learning unit. The unit is revolving around the question, how do plants sustain life on Earth? The unit involves growing plants, taking data, and incorporating the history and research behind plant growth. The teen implementation of this cross-curricular activity should increase retention of standards for all students across all subject areas. We are excited about spring break and look forward to returning with a renewed spirit. From Kurutuck County High School, congratulations to Marla Walls, our Morehead Kane Scholarship winner. And here are CCHS governor's school picks. Lillian East will be attending governor's school for the trumpet, and Alexander Duval will be attending for natural science. Congratulations to Mr. Meads, who is the District One Hunter Safety Instructor of the Year. The hunter safety team comes home with District One second place for the trap team, third place for the rifle team, and District One Sportsmanship Award. Congratulations to Mr. White for outstanding production, She Loves Me. The show was amazing and continues to showcase our wonderfully talented students. CCHS Prom will be on Saturday, April 28th, at the Hilton Garden Inn in Kitty Hawk. From Kurutuck County Middle, let the good times roll, and that's just what our A B honor roll kids did on their field trip to the Greenbrier Roller Skating Center on March 15th. It was so much fun to see and interact with our kids at the roller rink. The kids were amazed by how awesome their teachers were at roller skating. On March 13th, we recognize the hard work, sportsmanship, and leadership of our winter sport athletes at our winter sports awards ceremony. On Tuesday, we hosted our rising fifth-grade students. The students from Central, Griggs, Shawboro, and Jarvisburg got an up-close and personal look at middle school. We are very excited about our future Raider sixth graders. Mr. Latona's seventh-grade art students hosted an artist wax museum today. It was a great opportunity for our students to shine. The Junior Beta Club induction ceremony is coming up on April 10th at 6:30. We have a group of students and eighth-grade volunteers participating in the Special Olympics on April 13th at the Pasquotank County High School. They have been training hard all year, and we wish them luck. Finally, PBIS is having a barbecue dinner fundraiser. Pre-sales will begin the week of April 9th and will continue through April 27th. Barbecue dinners can be picked up at CCMS on Friday, May 18th, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. See a CCMS student to preorder. And with that, I will turn it over to Tyler.
Thank you, Jenna. Before I continue, I would also like to echo Jenna's opening statement, our applications for student board members can be found from our high schools, if you talk to the guidance counselors. Very important, since as the year's ending, we're gonna have a new cycle of student board members coming in. And with that, I go into Central Elementary. Central Elementary enjoyed a visit from students from JP NAP Early College's SAD program this past month, and had an amazing Title I night, in which we enjoyed a royal night of reading, where students and teachers transformed our school into a castle and placed our names in enchanted forest night sky for every book we read during the month of March. Our upcoming event included costumes, dinner, and a performance from the Bright Star Theater entitled Upcycled Cinderella. On April 13th, we had some very special students participating in Special Olympics, and our preschool students will be celebrating the Week of the Young Child, the week of April 16th. From Griggs Elementary, we had a lot going on at Griggs Elementary School, and we are looking forward to spring break. Our March, our Math 24 team competed in the annual competition and had a great time. Our kindergarten students enjoyed two weeks of swimming lessons at the YMCA. Fifth graders enjoyed their visit to CCMS. Title I night's Let's Talk About STEM was combined with our Three Through Five music program. We had a great turnout with close to fifty percent of our school attending. Our students also enjoyed a hilarious performance, Upcycled Cinderella, by the Bright Star Theater Group. Upon our return in April, we will be very busy with very many activities, including Battle of the Books competition, Third Nine Weeks Awards Assembly, and Honor Roll Outstanding Behavior Event, our Third Annual Talent Show, and our One Through Two music program. From Knott's Island Elementary, as we head into the Fourth Nine Weeks, Knott's Island will be participating in the Battle of the Books on April 12th. Students are looking forward to the AG Day and the AIG Field Trip on April 19th. We look forward to celebrating all our students' academic accomplishments during our Third Nine Weeks Awards Ceremony on April 20th. The Spring Book Fair will take place April 30th through May 4th. PTA will host a Spirit Night at Tubby's in Virginia Beach on April 13th. Come on out and support your KEIS Wood Ducks. With that, I turn it over to Colin.
This is about to sound like an echo, but please get those applications in for the student school board positions. But first, we'll start with Jarvisburg Elementary. JES hosted its first-ever Lunch and Learn event this week. Parents were invited to attend class with their student thirty minutes prior to their lunchtime. After sharing educational opportunities together, the parents and students had lunch together in the cafeteria. We had over one hundred parents visit our school this week. It was a fun and innovative idea that engaged parents and students alike. Check out last Tuesday's Daily Advance write-up on JES. We were spotlighted for hosting Miss North Carolina, our science grant in-house field trip, and how we celebrated our Leaders of the Month. We are also looking forward to the Third Nine Weeks Awards Day presentation on Friday, April 13th, 2018. And our STEAM, STEAM night on, I think that's supposed to be STEM, yeah.
No, 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 no. It's now grown to STEAM, and when they find another level, they just keep on growing into another word, you know? It's now STEAM, yeah.
And our STEAM night on Tuesday, April 17th, 2018. Come on out and explore science, technology, engineering, art, and math with us at JES. Next, we have Shawboro. Shawboro students wrapped up the Third Nine Weeks strong by working hard and showing perseverance in, oh, in the spirit of March Madness, Ms. Reynolds' fifth-grade English Language Arts class has designed a March Madness book battle bracket project. They have been collecting votes on daily book matchups and organizing the data electronically in spreadsheets. We can't wait to see which book reigns champion. Throughout the month of March, our teachers have been participating in a lot of structured professional development to focus in and continue to develop their, on, to develop on their skillset. We are excited for everyone to refresh and recharge over spring break, ready to charge into the Fourth Nine Weeks strong. From JP NAP, acceptance letters for the class of 2022 will go in the mail tomorrow. Our science department's garden is really taking shape where the trailer used to be. Our math students competed in the Chawan Math Competition last week with some impressive results. At Level One, they got second place. At Level Two, they got first place, and Madison Sherman placed first place on Level Two, and five other students qualified for states. The state FBLA conference was last week, and also, last week also, and we had two students place top ten in the state, and three other students qualify for nationals in Baltimore. Mr. Martin's English students participated in an essay contest in Kurutuck and Dare Counties, and two of his students placed first and second. Our science department will be holding a JP NAP Parent and Student Escape Room Science Challenge on Friday, April 13th at 5:00 PM. At JP NAP, JP NAP participants can register online. From all of us at JP NAP Early College, we hope you have a happy Easter and a safe and restful spring break. From Moyac Elementary, six MES students finished in the top twelve of the regional Math 24 competition earlier this month, with fifth-grader Emma Frederick placing first overall in the county. After researching famous people in history, MES second-grade students showed off their presentation skills in the annual MES Living Wax Museum. As you can see, strengthening Panther leaders continues to be the focus at Moyac Elementary School as we round out the seventeen eighteen school year, and that is all we have today.
Colin, Tyler, Jenna, thank you very much. Tyler, I did remember another thing that some school districts did back when Columbine happened, they bought walkthrough metal detectors and that. I happen to be an adjunct professor for East Carolina, taught statistics and research, and was on the Bertie Campus, which had four different pods, kind of like Napoly College. They had one walkthrough metal detector, and it was in front of the principal's office door.
Not very effective, huh?
Anyway, next item, 2018-19 Kurutuck County Schools calendar, and we need action on it. Do I have a motion to vote on one of the calendars, so we can get to some discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for Option One, draft Option One.
Okay, I have a motion for a draft Option One. Do I have a second? I'll second it for discussion purposes.
And just a clarification, this is elementary-middle-school calendar, just for the audience.
Yeah, elementary.
Elementary-middle-school calendar, the high schools have different calendars.
Okay, and since I was not at the work session, can somebody bring me up to speed on, you know, Option One, Option Two, Mr. Kradic?
I mean, as I was explaining, that Option One has less early release days, and thus I was told that it looked like, based on this... that it looked like, based on this, the data on the survey that was done, that there was, out of 439 responses, 140 of them being staff members, 64 of them parent and staff members, that being 204, it looked to me like they voted 290 out of the 400 and, what was it, 439, I think I said, 439, 290 were in favor of Option 2. However, when you looked at how many parents responded, 65 parents were in favor of Option 2, when there was a total of 100 and, let's see, 156 parents, but there was also 64 parent and staff members, so total parents, there was 220. And so, when I see that there was only 65 supporting Option 2, I went with the parents with Option 1, because I saw comments like, against, these are comments on Option 2, it was comments like, "Too many early releases when instructional time is more important than meetings." Early release days are hard for parents that are, work for a living. It is hard to find half a daycare, things like that. There's several more, and so that's why I would like to take Option 1. That's pretty much my summarization.
Okay. Is Jevonda still here?
Yeah.
Yes, she is.
Could you bring me up to speed on exactly what happens on your early release Fridays now?
This is the elementary calendar, though.
Yeah, but aren't we trying to align it with the?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
We've broken it up in probably about four different areas, so at least one time a month, we like to have what we call teacher time. That's where we don't have any full school-wide meetings or PD. Once a month, we have, we try to have a PD session, and the past two times we've done that this year, they've been led by teachers in the building. They'll submit proposals, and then we approve, and we, I think we've approved all of them, and then the teachers get the document, and then they choose which ones they want to go to, and then we, you know, have like a mini, you know, conference. One Friday afternoon a month, we have our, like, major meetings, like MTSS, PBIS, School Improvement Team, and then one Friday, we have Department PLCs. And so, we kind of rotate back and forth depending on what the need is.
I guess my next question would be, with all these early release days, how much instructional time do we have? Do we have?
We've got it set up that we've got to maintain 1,025 or more, and so with the early release days, Dr. Lutz, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we calculate about 1,046 on Option 1? And so, it gives us about 21 hours clear of the 1,025, and so that's, day-wise, that's probably just less than four, three and a half, three and a half days of spare hours for weather and such.
Can I just say that we've seen, obviously, that these early release days in the high school have made a big difference for the teachers in the early college and the high school, and I think we owe it to our middle school and elementary teachers to allow them these same opportunities for staff development and giving them the opportunity to try to see if we can do that. I was at the middle school, Currituck County Middle School, day before yesterday, and those teachers are giving up three of their teacher planning days per week because they're doing PLC, Personal Learning Development, during their planning time. So, this would at least give them some options of having more time to be able to do the things that they need to be able to do to be better instructors. So, that's why I didn't vote for Option 1.
Can I just lastly make this comment, that I believe that two halves aren't as beneficial as one whole education day? So, when you go two half-days, I don't think you get as much education as you do when you go one whole day. Now, that's where I'm at with it. Parents are with me, or at least with Option 1. I'm with the parents. That's why I voted that way.
I am concerned, I've heard lots of teachers say that they can't do it anymore. They're staying out there by 5:30 when they're supposed to leave at 3:15, 3:30, and they're still not getting it done, and they're doing it because they're concerned for their students and trying to educate them and meet all of their needs. That's why I'm for Option 2. I feel very strongly that we cannot continue putting our teachers last if we want to put our students first. We've got to, in order to do that, we've got to look out, try and help our teachers. And I know, as far as parents being concerned with childcare, I know that the daycares, when we get out early for the three or four early release days, and I was teaching, daycares came early and provided that, and Mr. Stefanik said schools in other districts had stepped up, if need be, to provide that. We also talked about elementary staff support, possibly doing some tutoring. Tyler and Colin both mentioned on early release days at NAP that they had stayed and tutored other students in math, so I just, I think it's worth a try, and this is not, our high schools are getting every Friday is an early release. We're looking for our middle schools and our elementary schools two Fridays a month, so it's not as much, but at least maybe it will help some start.
So, if we have half the number of early release days in Option 1, how many hours do we have in that calendar?
Actually, now that you say that, Option 1 might have 1,046. Option 2 is probably in the 1,035 range, I think.
Minus 12.
Minus 12.
Six-four early release days in Option 2, then there isn't.
Okay.
So, it's 34.
So, it's 34.
Colin would like to say something.
That would give us nine hours.
Can I add something on what Ms. Rose was talking about? With the Option 2, if I'm right, you have the early release days where you possibly will have kids who might need to stay back afterwards, say, for tutoring and stuff, and the issue comes up with the TAs also being bus drivers or not enough TAs available at the time. While I was actually at dinner, I thought about, you could possibly have some high school students who could volunteer hours, like people from Beta Club, who need the volunteer hours to go help watch the kids after school and help with.
Once they were supervised.
Yeah.
I mean, if they were in, yeah.
Great idea.
Good idea, but how do we get the kids home? If the buses run it halfway?
Well, like NAP has, you have buses that go at one time, then you have the later buses as well. And what happens is at NAP, so if you stay after school, you either have a ride home or you ride the bus. If you ride the bus, then you have to sign up for the bus, so they know, like, who they have to take home, so on and so forth. I made the mistake of one time, and that's how I learned of it, is I was staying after school for a science Olympiad meeting, and I didn't realize that you had to sign up for the bus, and the way they do it is they kind of designate routes the day before afterwards to make it more efficient to get all the kids home at a decent time.
So, there are two different buses that run the same routes? One is midday and the other at the end.
Yeah. Yeah.
And possibly, if we did have students going from NAP or the high school to the elementary schools, there are buses going from those schools in every direction, so they might be able to drop them off at the elementary schools. Maybe could be.
Hey, Mr. Mullins, how would that affect our efficiency rating if we're running late buses and that?
I was in here. It would kill them. The midday runs on the half-day Fridays where we have to do a route and then another route with a partially empty bus, that all gets calculated into our efficiency rating, the fuel, the driver, the monitor, so yes, it would hurt the budget.
So, is it safe to say that running two routes for a half a day is actually costing us more money?
When we have to do that, which we do.
He's not talking about the regular route.
I know what he's talking about. He's talking about JP NAP, right?
Yes.
On Fridays, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, it's costing us more money to do that. Thank you.
Okay, Jessica, anytime you look at the bus on the work twice, it does cost more.
Yes, sir, and that's what I alluded to when we talked about this months back, but I'm glad we finally agree.
It's not money.
I did a quick calculation. I think we have 6,000 parents approximately in our school district for kids, bigger than a parent and a half per student, and we only had how many?
It wasn't much response.
150.
Well, plus the 65.
Or the staff and, yeah, staff and parents.
210 or 209, so.
I had several phone calls from staff members. I didn't have any phone calls from parents.
We had 65 and 150-something. It's around here somewhere. It's over 200.
I wish we'd had more parents, you know, comment on really what they support.
I would agree with that.
Me too.
But the number, as I'm seeing it, was?
It was 156, I think.
Plus the 64 that are parent staff.
Yeah.
So, what's that, 219, I think, 220?
Okay, any other comments?
Well, the only thing I'm going to say is that one of the things that was suggested at the work session is that we need to move the, whichever calendar we use for the elementary, we need to move the Easter break to the week, to align with the high school and JP NAP, so it would be the week after what's listed on the calendar.
Right. 22nd through the 26th.
22nd through the 26th.
Yeah, because we don't want some to have the week before and.
We don't want half the school to have Easter break before and a half after.
They explained how it's, the high school calendars have, are in connection with COA.
Connection with COA. COA's adapted theirs to where everything is.
And the way these are, they don't work with the high school. We've got different spring breaks.
They're a week out, is what they're saying.
We need to change it. Definitely with 1 or 2, we need to change spring break.
With whichever one.
Yes, and.
But right now, you have a motion.
Yeah, and, well, and the motion on the floor, if I could speak to that, Dr. Dobney, went back real quick and had a consult with Dr. Lutz, who's been working with our elementary folks, and the one thing that Mr. Kratic said here about two halves don't equal a whole, you know, type of thing, we have Option 1 that has X number of half-days, or early release days, and then we have Option 2 that has some more, you know, added in. We believe that if we designate morning hours for one type of activity on a professional development day and afternoon hours for something else, that we might be able to take Option 1, turn the early release days into professional days, and it would get the same number of contact hours for professional work as Option 2 has, and only have, you know, not split anything up, so it would be a day's worth of childcare, you know, for families that they'd have to come up with, but then the busing issue would not have to be an issue.
But then the teachers are not getting the time spread out.
They are, they're getting a whole day.
It's not, it's not spread out, it's just on one day.
It's full days.
It's a full day, not a half day.
So, that would be Option 1 with professional leave rather than early release.
Yes, yes.
I'm still in favor of that.
Yes, and then what you get is you get the same number of professional hours that show up in Option 2, but it shows up under the format of Option 1.
Less early release days, is that what you're saying?
Well, none. I mean, there might, well, there might be some, like before holiday breaks or whatever.
You're talking about the early release on Option 1, and you're just making them professional?
Make them full days instead of halves.
I like that better.
Yep.
Do you want to modify your motion, Mr. Kratic?
I'd like to modify my motion to make Option 1 with the verbiage that Mr. Stefanik just spoke of, and moving the holiday to align itself with, I believe it's JP NAP and Currituck County High School's calendar.
Spring break.
So, we're flipping it a week.
Yeah, spring break, yeah. We don't have the power to change holidays, so.
Excuse me, I'm in the holiday week, the break that we're taking, and so that's what I would like to do.
Do I have a second for that? I'll second that, I kind of like that idea.
I just, do I need to second it before we talk about it?
He seconded.
I already seconded it.
Are all of the early release, then, are you saying all of the early release days in the calendar on Option 1 are going to be full days now, full?
Professional days.
Professional days?
Let me pull out Option 1. I know there are some early release days that are done for travel safety and things like that.
Right.
Those would stay, those would stay early release days.
Like the August one, that's kind of where I was with that.
The day before spring break.
The one before Christmas.
Right.
So, what would those days turn into for teachers? Workdays?
They're going to get.
The ones we're changing to full days?
Yeah.
Yes, it would be, it'd be a work day.
One in January.
And again, some of the time then could be designated as PLC or training time, and the other time would be planning time for individual teachers or groups of teachers.
In September, one, two.
Do you have a motion to second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor of Option 1 with Mr. Kratic's changes? Signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, all opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Motion passes 3-2.
With that, if they're getting a full day, I just want.
They just won't come. They just won't go to school.
Okay, next item, second reading and adoption of policy 7410, teacher contracts.
See, that's my whole point. Well, it's done now.
Well, we didn't have it in front of us, so it wasn't understood.
No.
I know.
It needs to be mandatory days.
RW. RW required.
Okay, all right. As long as it's that and not where?
They can take off.
They can take off and we're not going to get those professional development hours.
Six is required work day, so that's your six, one.
Okay, all right.
Needs to be required work day.
All of RW.
Okay.
Right, and that's right, yeah, we want to make sure the people there to get growth, yeah, we want to do growth. Here's the way it's set up.
Except the ones before the holidays and that.
Yeah, here's the way it would set up. August, August 31st would remain an early release day. In September, September 19th would be a full required work day. October 17th, full required work day. December, the early release day before the holiday break would still be an early release. January 30th would be a full required work day. February 27th would be a full required work day. March 27th, full required work day. April 12th stays an early release day before spring break. May.
Moving spring break.
Different date, same idea. Different date, same idea. May, May 24th, still an early release day before the Memorial Day weekend, and then the last day of school, June 8th, would be early release.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, but that was the big stipulation for me, is to make sure it was mandatory, because I know what would happen if we didn't do that.
No, yeah, we want the folks to get the work done and get the trainings that are offered, and so they would become required days.
It has to be mandatory.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, next item, second reading and adoption of policy 7410, teacher contracts. Mark, can you bring me up to speed on that?
Yes, we had four, four options this year with the state giving local boards the option for teacher contract lengths and the policy that surrounds those. We received 80 responses from teachers throughout the district, and the breakdown was, Option 1 was 22 for, 24 against. Option 2 was in the vicinity of almost 34 and only like eight against. Option 3 was 17 for, 16 against, and Option 4 was four in favor of it and like 25 against. And the differences were, Option 1, the way ours was set up, the maximum contract would be two years, and you would just have repeating two-year contracts. Option 2. contracts. Option two aligns most closely with the way the administrative contract law is set up. After your first three years, you're eligible for a two-year contract. And after the two-year contract, you're eligible for four-year contracts. That was the one that had the most positive responses by the teaching staff. And it's also the one that the superintendents in the region thought was the most favorable of the four.
And they chose option two?
Option two, yeah.
Do I have a motion that we adopt option two?
Make a motion for option two.
I second it.
I have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, field trip request.
For field trip requests, and much like other months, we have a variety of things going on, not just athletics, but we have academics, we have the arts, spread out over town. And just an FYI for the board members, I know those student reports, you know, get lengthy because there's so many activities going on at our schools, but please notice how many award winners there were when we went to regional competitions and state competitions. And so I get excited when things like science Olympiad show up, coral festivals, things like that, because I'm almost sure that somebody's going to come back with outstanding awards from those. And, and that shows that the Currituck County School District is, you know, very well-rounded and the students come out with some amazing skill levels or talent bases. And it's nice to showcase those, not just locally, but, you know, across the region and across the state. And I guess one of the math competitions over here, wasn't it math or was it FBLA Nationals? FBLA, okay. So FBLA, even at the national level, we have students going. And that's, that's pretty exceptional.
Okay, next item, consent agenda, can't even speak anymore. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, information items. Our next work session will be May 3rd at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 4:00. Our next board meeting's going to be May 3rd, right here at 6:30. And board member and superintendent comments, Mr. Stefanik.
Just made it. I'm excited about what our students are able to accomplish on a daily basis. And that's thanks to the teachers that are working with them in the various areas and, and the administrators that are helping organize the schools as well. So I'm just excited about their, their success.
Great. Mr. Kradek?
I'd like to say that I was really impressed with the students in the STEM program that were here this evening with Nausetlal Elementary. I also was very impressed with the athletic fields, the service that's being provided by Mr. Richardson, that he's volunteering his time. A lot of people might not realize that how nice the fields are starting to look, but he's going to take home more fields. And all we have to do is provide the materials. And I thought that was pretty amazing. I want people to further understand that I'm not against anybody's First Amendment rights. I'm just trying to get to the core purpose that we're all here, and that's to offer education. And I think we at times have to get back to the nucleus of why we're here. And with that, I wish everybody a happy Easter and God bless Currituck County.
Ms. Rose?
I just want to give a shout out to a few groups. We had some students who went and participated in the regional band, I believe down in Dare County recently. Air Moyoc Middle School FBLA brought back a slew of awards. JP NAP sad chapter has recently started mentoring some students at Central Elementary. Jarvisburg Elementary School, I popped in there when they were doing the lunch and learn. I was very impressed with the parental support on that day. Air Theater Group, She Loves Me, what an awesome musical that was. Moyoc Elementary School's second graders, Wax Museum, I saw one of those people on the front row tonight, a Boy Scout, but they did a great job. Air Middle School and High School Spring Athletes, I know they work hard, practice day in, day out, and, and they're all doing a great job. Hunter Safety Group went to Columbia last week and I was, they did win some awards, but I was most proud that they got the sportsmanship award. There was only one award given out, 16, 17 schools, and we got it. Currituck County, nothing but compliments on our students. And Mr. Meads, of course, Coach of the Year, congratulations to him. And a big thank you to our teachers and staff who work so hard on a daily basis as they strive to educate all of our students.
Ms. Graff?
Yes, I visited all of our schools this month. I read to Griggs Elementary fourth grade students, Read Across, for Read Across America. I went to this Moyoc Elementary School second grade Wax Museum. They always do a great job, and this time was no different. Mr. White's play, She Loves Me, I just think every year, he just, it gets better and better. He's, he's amazing. I went to YMCA and watched the YMCA swim instructors with the Griggs Elementary Kindergarteners. They are awesome. They did such an amazing job, and the kids had a wonderful time. And I want to wish all of our teachers a great break and get some rest and enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Ms. Sathri?
Yes, I too was able to attend a few functions in the county. I went to the Spring Into the Arts that was held at the high school. It displayed all of the kids' artwork. And we have some talented artists in our community. Central Elementary School, which is very dear to my heart because my firstborn granddaughter attends Central, and she was dressed up as a princess. And she attended the Title One Night and the Enchanted Forest. And of course, her little brother had to dress up as well, even though he's four years old. He thought he was just as big as the rest of them. And it was a royal night of reading. And it was just such a nice event that was catered. And then they had the production that we, we were able to watch that evening. The Spring Musical, Buddy White, Tiffany Arbogast, She Loves Me. It was a wonderful performance by all the students and the, the staff and everybody works together to, to make that production such a success. One little thing I wanted to mention, on April 14th, the Amory Conference is going to be held at JP NAP Early College High School. I urge the young ladies in our community at both of our high schools to attend that. It's a great afternoon and evening. Always have a good time helping out there. I hope each and every one of you have a blessed Easter and enjoy your well-deserved spring break. Thank you.
Well, take a minute to pat myself on the back. I think it was 2001, I asked Buddy to come to the high school and teach drama.
Wow.
Oh, gosh.
Good for you.
And I've probably seen more plays than anybody.
Yeah, he said 50, 55 was in the program.
This, I told him afterwards, this by far and away was the best.
I agree.
And it was like a Broadway musical. That's how well it was done. It was like, just incredible.
I agree.
Oh, and I attended Spring Into the Arts. And not only do they have visual arts, they had musical arts there, too. I attended two committee meetings on bullying. I attended one committee meeting on safety. I attended Hunter Safety. Was that when we froze that day? Was that since the last board meeting?
I couldn't do it. I just couldn't do it.
And I also went to a girls' soccer match where they played K. Patterson. I watched number three take a couple shots on goal. Did you ever make one?
I don't think so.
Okay, I won't, I won't go there. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I motion, we adjourn.
Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.